All right, it's 9:30 a.m., the nineteenth day of February. We'll bring a special session of Somerville County Commissioners' Court to order. Let the record show Larry Holsey, Dwayne Johnson, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Wade Bush are all present. Item number one, discuss, approve, take action on Crown Correctional Telephone Incorporated as the phone provider for the inmate phone system at the Somerville County Sheriff's Office. Alan, I don't know if you or the gentleman beside you will be presenting this.
Well, I'll just go ahead and do Brian and let him speak for a minute.
Would you make sure that mic's on, Alan?
It isn't on, it is now. Ryan Bartula comes from, personally in this business since 1999. He's owned Crown Correction Telephone since 2007. We currently use him through Sterling Commissary for our jail commissary contract, and he brings a person, you know, just as person that he is and his reputation of checking with us, you know, and if we have any issues, it's been at a phone call's notice. So, I'm just gonna turn over to him, let him tell you about what the Crown Telephone will be about, and if you have any questions. I've got Trica that's been working with him now for about, well, almost a year with our Sterling Commissary that is another part of this picture. Our CTEL, I've never met the individuals, that we've had the contract with from previous administrations, and it runs out March 9th.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. I brought some extra packets. I don't know if Commissioners have the information that the sheriff sent over on Friday?
We had them on, I had them on last night. Yeah, the sheriff sent us?
Sure. Yes. Make sure. Thank you, sir.
I'll give two.
Thank you. Do you? Okay. And thank you for the time, and Sheriff West and Trica for allowing me to come and visit with everyone. I wanted to answer any questions that anybody had regarding the telephone service. We, just stop me if you have any questions, but we have been in communication with the Sheriff's Office for over a year. We, I also own Sterling Commissary and were their commissary provider for the inmate commissary cells. We have some new technology that we wanted to implement that is currently not in operation at the jail. One of those that the Chief Deputy Griffin wanted was recorded visitation lines for investigation purposes. Right now, in their current setup, the inmates visit through the phones, but they're not recorded. So, that hurts in their investigations. Plus, the facility wants to go paperless in regards to grievances, medical requests, and general requests on maintenance and such. So, we have a program that we install touchscreens in all the cells, and all of this comes free of charge to Somerville County and the Sheriff's Office. So, there's no upfront cost, no annual cost, and no per-user cost. The county earns a straight commission off of every use that's through any of our phone calls or text messages through our touchscreens, and the inmates also have the capability of remote visits through a video visitation system like Skype. And these units will be placed in the cells, and they'll have the capability of putting in grievances, and this will help with their jail inspection every year that's required by the Texas Jail Commission, and allow the facility to maintain the reports and things on those grievances remotely instead of having to go them through paper. They also have the capability of sending text messages and emails to their family, which is really our society these days. All of that is fully recordable. It's kept on our servers in the cloud forever, so if they need to pull that information for trial or anything, they could just download it from the web and not have to worry about keeping track of multiple pieces of paper in a file. We're based in Clifton, over in Boski County. We have currently about sixty accounts in the state of Texas. We're in about two-hundred-and-eighty accounts in nineteen states, eighteen or nineteen states at this time. We're a family-owned business. Mother, father, uncles work for me. We have about fifteen employees in Texas and then a few others in surrounding states.
And I guess, and I apologize, I should know this. Are we looking for, like, authorization from the court? Alan move forward with this contract? Because he is definitely the sheriff.
You know, it's basically a dovetail. It's another component of an existing contract that we have with them.
Right.
The commission revenue is much less than fifty thousand dollars, maybe a billion or anything like that. Per the government code, commissions from inmate phones are part of the general fund. So, they come into the general fund, which we have a line item for that. And we, you know, with CTEL, we never received it because they've worked out, and I can add on to Alan, since I've been here in 2013, I have never met CTEL. They've all been by email, and they had a contract that just automatically renewed, and, you know, we've given, Alan has given them notice, now they cancel that. What they did is they paid their commission upfront in the form of phone cards that were then sold, and the proceeds went to the commissary account. So, it was really...
The problem we have with that, you have inmate that's not supposed to be getting some type of commissary or something like that. They were able to trade and bar different cards back and forth with people, so this kind of eliminates some of those jailhouse swaps that they're trying to do. So, we went away from that when the commissary came in just a little over, you know, about a year ago. Well, obviously, this is the way you and Dwayne definitely want to go. And Trica, she's a key part of this, running the jail in the back, so I asked her to be here because she can tell you on the booking side how, the bookkeeping side, how it's just, how it's been working smooth, so... All right. Well, we have any further questions or discussion for this gentleman, or Alan, or Dwayne, or Trica?
No, I'll make a motion.
All right. I have a motion by Larry to move forward with Crown Correctional Telephone for the Sheriff's Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good day. Appreciate it.
Do you have one? Do you have one? Do you have one? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you all.
Item number two, accept resignation of John Curtis for the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors and appoint a new member. John went on record at their last meeting, which I believe was last Thursday or Friday. He stated during the meeting on record that he was resigning his post and that we would need to appoint a new one. It was my understanding that Wade is willing to serve on the Board of Directors, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So, if, I guess I'd ask for a motion to appoint Wade to that position if no one opposes, anybody like that?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth to appoint Wade to the Board of Directors for the Central Appraisal District. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for and zero against. Item number three, I'll try to make this and sort it as I possibly can. Discuss, take action, resolution between Somerville County, Mills County Bank, and Haco, Texas pursuant to the instrument number 201-804-67 of the official public records of the county. This is dealing with Texas Freight and the bank that she's using financing to do their construction, the lawyers for that group, abstract company. Jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong at any time. They called over here, Kelsey got all the information of when y'all voted back in June of 2015, it gave me the authorization to sign any agreements once that the court approved the deal, to sign the agreements, subordination agreements, so on and so forth. There was one attorney there that didn't like that. He still wanted the subordination agreement to be voted on in court, and each Commissioner and judge sign what it is. It's like all the other agreements, it says Somerville County will take second to the bank. The bank has first lien against the property. If for any reason Texas Freight were to default, we have the first right of refusal. If they don't like that, then they pay us a seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we gave for the property. They buy us out of it, then they move on. It's what we've done for everybody that we dealt with. But if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them if I can, or if I can't, I bet Andy can. It's just a matter of this one particular lawyer wanted it to be dated and signed by the court for Mills County Bank.
And we're talking about?
The company?
Yeah, I mean, what does this entail? I know what we're talking about, but what does this entail? What business is this?
Texas Freight, it's the one that, you know, where the two day carers are going in. She's got six point something acres, you know what?
Close to street.
I do have the actual survey and the agreement here, so...
It's on the corner there.
Yeah, it's that piece of property right behind, like, Champion Auto and Glen Wilson Strip Mall. She's gonna put in a business for all, or office building for all her employees, and in the lay-down yard where they inspect trucks, and then also, I understand, maybe a shop where they can actually pull the trucks in, but not do work on them, just inspect them. They have to inspect them. And the, I have no clue what the loan is, the improvements that she's gonna do is roughly half a million dollars. We've got that here. Hang on here just a second. We granted seventy-five thousand when we gave the property to her in place of hiring five employees, which she already has done that. It's right here from, I believe it's half a million dollars improvement, if I'm not mistaken.
It was a two-stage, we did three years, and then within five.
Right. She has to do the employees, I think, in the first year, which she accomplished.
Right, three-hundred-and-fifty, I think, and within three years, and then half a million within five, if I remember correctly.
Break ground and start construction, I think, within eighteen months. You're gonna have to bring me, but anyhow, total would be like a half a million dollar improvement. Now, that's right, that, let's see, yours? Yes. Right over here would be the expo? Yeah, and you come in, right here would be the two-day carriage.
Good, is that am I correct on, they want an agreement with us?
Oh, what it is, is, well, I can just read it out loud. Bear with me while I read it out loud. Whereas pursuant to directed authorization of the court, which is us, certain tract of land located in Somerville County, Texas, was conveyed to Texas Freight by special warranty deed and recorded under instrument number 201-804-67 of the public records Somerville County, Texas. Whereas pursuant to direct authorization of this court, Somerville County, Texas entered into that certain Somerville County economic development program, project agreement with Texas Freight, recorded under instrument number 201-804-68 of the official record, public records of Somerville County, Texas. Whereas in order to facilitate the capital investment necessary for Texas Freight to fulfill its obligations under foregoing instrument, Somerville County, Texas, by and through and authorized signer Danny L. Chambers, County Judge, executed that certain subordination agreement between Somerville County, Texas, Mills County State Bank of Haco on December 6th of 2018, a true and correct copy of which is attached, which is this agreement right here. Is therefore resolved by Somerville County Commissioners' Court that that certain subordination agreement between Somerville County, Texas, and Mills County State Bank of Haco executed on December 6th, 2018, is hereby ratified and to be made effective upon recording in the official public records of Somerville County, Texas. I guess they're afraid that I did this without y'all knowing about it, so they're wanting y'all to make sure that you know that this was entered into.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry to ratify the subordination agreement.
Take it.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or comments that might be Andy and I can answer? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. If you don't mind, let's go ahead and just take care of this right now. That goes five, zero. If you don't mind passing down there and signing it, pass it back this way. Son, if you don't mind, I didn't put a sticky note on there. That's the one when we completed. If you will email me a filed copy of that whole document, I'm supposed to send it to that abstract company and that lawyer.
Okay, so timestamp it and then email it to you.
Yes, file it timestamp. Maybe we can make those folks happy. All right. Item number four, Krista, I believe that's you. Discuss, take action, approve interlocal agreements between Somerville County, the City of Glenrose, Glenrose ISD, and the Somerville County Hospital District to lease county-owned electronic voting equipment for the May 4th, 2019 election.
Yes, I have submitted all the interlocal agreements for the city, the hospital, and the school told the May 4th election. The agreement spells out what each entity is responsible for and what they're requesting. The hospital and the school are wanting to use the M-100, the auto mark, and our poll book. The city is just wanting to use the auto mark and our poll book. And each entity will be holding early voting at their own locations. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same. Do y'all have any questions?
Do you have any problem with it?
Nope, no, sir.
And this is similar to what we've done in the past with all the entities?
Yes. Mm-hmm, they order their own equip, or their own ballots, and they program everything and...
Is this something y'all take care of, or do they have the people that run it, or?
They hire their own workers.
And it doesn't cost us anything?
Correct.
Hasn't been enough filed to have contested races at the city, or?
Yes, the only one that I am aware of that may wind up canceling is the hospital.
All right, do I have a motion to enter into the interlocal agreement with the other entities?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry.
Take it.
Have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or comments? After I sign and date these, do you have to get them filed, or do you need, you just need the copies of the contract?
I think I just need the copies. Do y'all normally do that? Do you know?
Just give you copies?
Yeah.
Keep the original one or anything?
Oh, okay. Okay.
The reason I was asking, we'll send them down here and put them in that pile, and then you can pick them up after they get them filed if you want.
Okay, yeah, that'll work. We'll do that. Okay.
All right.
That'll work, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. Thank you, Krista. for meetings pertaining to expenses and payroll. I don't know who wants to run with this one. Suzie, Brian? I guess the main question is, the day before payroll, if you have it ready by 11:30 for the direct deposit, is that correct? 11:30 before, then it also could be ready for the court to review and approve at 9:30?
Yes, but I guess somebody had mentioned that they may need a couple of days to review it.
That was mentioned. I don't know where we stand on that. I guess it depends on what all the court wants to see and what they, how much intel they want, okay?
Couldn't we, that morning, review it and pass it and shoot a positive?
Whatever this court wishes to proceed forward with.
Well, I'm concerned, all I need to see is bottom line. I just need to see all this, where it's going.
Eligible bottom line that we can read easily.
That report only prints while you're doing payroll. It prints on green bar. That's our permanent record.
I don't want to have the lumpy going, what am I looking at?
I can bring it in here.
I want to see the actual green bar.
Yeah.
Can't you just put it on this other piece of paper that this is what the total is?
Yes, absolutely.
That'll work, that'll work for me.
It's good for me.
Good for Wade.
Guess I didn't see the numbers.
Good for you, good for you, Larry. All right, so if, right now, and if it doesn't work out, then it's a moving target. If I schedule a meeting on the day before payroll, say like in February, 28th will be our next payroll, right? If I schedule one on 27th at 9:30 a.m., we'll all be good. And if I move forward with that, so like March on the 14th and the 28th, because the payment's actually on 29th. All right, so right now, if I just make the court to meet on the day before payroll, unless it falls on a weekend or holiday.
9:30 would be great.
9:30 meeting.
First thing, yes.
All right. So, do I have a motion to schedule meetings to approve expenses and payroll on the day before payroll at 9:30 a.m.?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion?
No, there still may be need for additional meetings.
Okay.
I mean, I'm thinking, okay, like, in March, once a quarter, she has to remit her fees to the state, and that usually, because she's trying to get payroll done first, we're usually working on that the last day, day before, the last day of the month, that kind of stuff. So, you know, like...
If it doesn't coincide, we'll just make another special meeting.
Right, so I want you to know this doesn't cover all of it. There may be some additional, you know, once a quarter, that kind of stuff.
Sure, like we do now, we have special meetings when we have to, to do what we need to do. No problem. We just need the communication. If you need something, we need to know.
Yeah.
Don't say nothing. Send it two hours, and then we'll make it happen. All right, I have a motion. Did I have a second?
Yep.
Good, any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. Five for, zero against. Number six, discuss, take action on day-to-day operations and expenditures at the Expo Center. This is not a recommendation, this is just some information that Paula put together. We might could live by, information I think Ryan helped her put together, I don't know about this. I'll let you explain what happened or how it didn't happen as far as, you know, like on the barrel racing and things, when he needs to operate for having expenses.
Right, you know, when we talked about prior approval of all expenditures, you know, it opened up some, maybe unintended consequences, and one of those was the Expo Center has a bank account that was started way back, I think, in the duly days, and the original intent of that account was for the deposits that groups pay, it gets deposited into there. When the group pays out at the end of their event, it goes into there, and then it's reconciled, and then they write a check out of that account to the treasurer's office to settle up for that event. So, you know, it comes to a, and then as time has gone on, it has morphed into other things. He's done, he's doing his own events down there, well, these people pay entry fees, and they expect, and they win entry, and they win cash prizes, and so they expect to be paid. He has judges or other individuals that come in and perform services down there that he pays at the end of the event. And then, over time, he has also purchased things through that account. Now, I think we've got the purchasing part addressed, and it's gonna come through the court, but we still have these other two things that remain, the, you know, him writing checks to the treasurer as the event clears out, and these events, these barrel races and ropings that he does, and, you know, they're expecting to leave there with money in their pocket, or a check or something.
And this is by no means a recommendation, this is just research, like I said, that was done. The best my way of understanding, and I could be way off, say if we did the petty cash fund for him to do his ropings and barrel races and things like that, it looks like that we would just get the director bonded, say for like up to five thousand dollars. I guess it'd be like what we do for the rope superintendent and the fire marshal. That's both of the inexpensive for the one, two, three-year, however we need to do it. Because I understand that sometimes this can run up to two thousand, thirty-five hundred, is that correct? I mean, on the evenings?
On our jackpots, yes. Now, as far as our two races that we do a year, it's gonna exceed that. We do, we do two of our own races, one of which I sign three hundred checks in two days. Brian, I don't know what the sum of that is, though, off the top of my head.
It's pretty, and then, of course, just the checks you write to the treasurer. I mean, some of those are twenty, thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
So...
And there was another way that Paula researched here that I haven't delved off into, that you can change actually what we have structured for that enterprise fund, which, you know, gives the director more latitude in business, but I haven't researched that, Andy, and I haven't discussed that at all.
You know, I think on the payments to the treasurer, I think that that can be easily remedied, but just writing the check but not signing it, and just having the treasurer sign it, that part, I think, takes care of itself.
Okay.
With, you know, the stick point is the fact that it's, the stick point is it hasn't been approved.
Right.
It's a payment, but we're paying ourselves. So, I think we can kind of, it's not paying an outside vendor. It's transferring money. You know, and then we just consider that other, we just consider that Expo deposit account a petty cash account.
Okay.
And he uses that for his, for his events. I mean, understanding that those two big events, I mean, those two big barrel races and stuff, I mean, they could be sizable.
Should we get him bonded for the maximum amount?
What is the maximum amount?
Is it like fifty thousand? What would it, what would it be?
I think fifty would be, fifty would be fine for all the checks that I pay you, but I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what that, honestly, I think last year I paid out a hundred and... I don't, I don't want to say.
Could you find?
I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand.
Are those checks you write that day and they take, or those checks that you mail?
Yeah, it's gonna be a combination of both. We'll do jackpot on Friday, Saturday morning, I'll sign a hundred and fifty checks, and if the gals are still there running, they'll, you know, pick the checks up.
So, could you not, I'm just asking this question. Are the ones that you mail, you know, you can get the checks put together, and the ones that are gonna be mailed out, that the treasurer sign notes, where you're only dealing with the ones that are basically cash basis, pay out immediately?
I don't think the signature is the problem as much as it is the court's approval.
I think the signature's the problem. Only the treasurer can issue warrants on the county.
Yeah, it's gotta be counter signed by the alderman.
Correct.
For the government. But if it's a petty cash fund, we can have petty cash.
Then it's cash, right. Then it's cash.
Well, I mean, you can, you can have, well, you know...
Because no matter what you call it, he can't sign checks on the county.
What I'd like, what I'd like to say, and Wade and myself are both working on it right now, is we're trying to communicate with some other people that have the same problem, you know, that's a county-owned facility, that they're having the same ropings, the same barrel raising, and see what their solutions are and how they're getting around, getting around it.
So, they do that, like, Bell County? Do they do that?
Honestly, I don't believe so. Bell's run by a private manager.
I think it was contract.
County-owned facility, county-owned, but it's a nonprofit that runs it.
You know, so we didn't get more information?
Can we, Andy, can we get, can he be under a contract on this, Tector's thing?
I'd have to think through that, if that's, if that would be a solution to this.
Maybe we better do more research before we try to take any kind of action on this.
Yes. When's your next payout, or whatever you wanna call it?
It'll be...
Morning?
Probably Monday. No, I've got, yeah, when the cap roping final's moving in today and tomorrow, it'll start Thursday, the cap roping finals will be over Monday, and I'll probably pay that, and then I'll go into, I've got the American qualifier tie-down slack Monday or Tuesday, so that'll probably be another check. And then I'm sure I've got the barrel... And then I'm sure I've got barrels on. When's that?
Well, I think the, I think the, the settlement of the, the events, that I think could be pretty remedied and just bring them in, just, you know, go ahead and have the check made out, just let the treasurer sign off on it. And that way it's just basically a money transfer from one county account to another, that doesn't need advanced, uh, permission, because she's the chief investment officer, she can do the money. You know, I think the, I think the, the issue at hand, I think that you're going to have to, we're going to research and come up with, are the payouts to participants, your, your races.
That'll probably be Wednesday.
Yeah.
If I have one.
Is coming up Wednesday, tomorrow?
No, next Wednesday. Yeah, so I give a sweep.
We have another meeting on, whatever, Monday or. Let's look at calendar, I quit. During week and trial week pre-all.
And I think you already have one tentatively scheduled for 27th.
We do on the 27th, that's, that's, uh, the day of. Yeah, I guess we could make, because we've got one scheduled for 27th, day for payroll, we could put this in, it'd be the morning before you had to pay these folks that evening.
But he doesn't know who he's going to have to pay.
Right, don't know what size the bond or.
I mean, unless the fix is in, but, you know, I mean, other than that, you know.
But he, he knows, can we not do this? I mean, he, you know what that barrel race is going to run on, on, on money, correct? Usually 2,000 or something, 25,000?
Well, it depends upon how many entries I have.
Right, you've got an average, what they normally run.
Yes, that's correct.
Can't we? Could we pre-approve that amount as a bill?
He still can't sign a check.
We're work, we're working on it, we're working on it.
Could you, could you establish temporarily till you figure it out, a petty cash fund, and the amount of what you need?
You have a save there, right, in the Expo site?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, what does a petty cash account mean? I mean, I can pay the gals out that night in cash, which I typically do. The gals that leave early, I write a check that morning and mail it to them. It doesn't sound like, because there I'm signing a check, and it doesn't sound like I can do that, and I'm not about to mail the cash.
Right.
But could she get, if we got that pre-approved, if we could pre-approve that, you bring it to her and let her sign the checks. You already do your checks, and they still sign the checks, they go out the same day.
Sure.
That takes care of the signature. We handle the cash fund with the petty cash fund and all checks, need to come back to these folks here, correct?
Alright, so if you set up a petty cash fund of $2,000, then the day after your, your race, you should still have $2,000. Because you've taken in, because you, you pretty much pay out less, well, I mean.
Yeah, we make money on, right, right. How do we handle banks? Because I'll sign a check either today or tomorrow to get a starting bank for my stalls, and RVs and shavings. And it'll probably be 2,000 bucks today, or it's, maybe it's tomorrow, I don't know what Lane's got in mind, but it's probably for today. And I'll do that every barrel and team, too. But it's just a starting bank.
It's a mess.
Yeah, there's more checks than just what I pay out.
We're going to have to research and look into how to set that up, we can actually do the checks. I don't know the answer, I'm not saying I do, I'm going to research this, come up with the answer.
And, you know, there, there's some, there's some automatic debits that come out of our account, you know, credit card fees, same with golf courses and stuff, that no virtue you can approve ahead of time. We don't know what it's going to be.
So enterprise funds, both I'm going to be looking at in, in depth to see how we align this for the future.
Yeah, all the credit card machines in the county, the user pays a fee, so, you know, we get, if they charge a hundred dollars, we get a hundred dollars. Not so with golf courses or the Expo, you know, they charge a hundred dollars, they get 98 dollars and 22 cents or whatever.
So personal thought, I'm not speaking for the court, personal thought, is we need to do business as we have for the last 20 years until we get this rectified. That's personal thought.
Yes.
Not create more of a problem.
Right, I agree with that.
So, we will not take any action on this, uh, item number six, until we have further research and discussion, and we'll just continue business as usual, until we get this rectified. Is that good? We will.
Y'all going to record for vote on that?
If y'all would like, if, uh, if y'all, I mean, I'm the only one stuck in my neck out here so far. I make the motion, we continue business at the Expo Center, as we have in the past, until we come up with a solution for the problem. I have a motion by Dwayne, thank you, do I have a second?
Thank you.
I have a second by Kenneth, any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Alright, item number six. Discuss take action on disposing of old split rail fence at the golf course. Jeff, would you want to explain to us the situation that we've got?
That's number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, number seven. Yeah. My neck's been stuck out there, Andy. Alright, thank you, thank you. Alright, Jeff.
As most everybody knows, uh, the split rail fence along 67, Highway 67, is, uh, being replaced, and we're producing, uh, scrap from the old fence, and we are keeping what is good from the old fence, uh, to do repairs on the other fences we have around the property. Normally, I wouldn't have asked this, um, but I'm getting a lot of requests, several requests, for the old material from the fencing. What we've been doing is, uh, just hauling it to the chipper, the stuff that we're not going to use, but I've had five or six phone calls, texts, whatever, people wanting that. So I just was putting this out as a question on if we wanted to, uh, give it to people that want it. Either way, it doesn't matter, to me, it's all going either to the chipper or the trash pile somewhere, as far as we're concerned, it has no value.
You know, the, the, the disposal of county assets, there's two, there's two aspects, if there, if there's value, obviously, we know it has to go to an auction. If, if what it is has no value, no residual value whatsoever, we can immediately declare it surplus and refuse. You know, however, uh, you know, if we almost, in, in, in interest of fairness, we almost have to like let everybody know that on a certain date, it'll be available. And so we're not making any type of agreements with, so that we can't, we can't be accused of, well, we let John have it, but not Barry.
Is that going to wind up causing you more problems?
Well, my intention is to set it out in a place where it's first come, first served, I'm not going to make myself available to unlock gates and hold property for certain people. It just is, no, we, it's sitting where it's sitting, and that's it, and, and I'm suggesting at the end of two, three weeks, a week, whatever, that if it's still there, we're going to take care of it to the.
Don't, don't we have to advertise for two weeks to?
Not, not if it's resused.
Yeah, but how is anybody going to know?
Agreed, I think that's how we're going to have to, well, well, that's, that's one aspect of this, that we, how we get the word out, type thing. You know, I mean, we do something similar with the Expo with your, with your, your trash, your, your shavings that come out of the, the stalls. But, you know, as far as I know, no one else is called wanting that stuff, and, you know, we push it out the door and somebody comes and gets it.
So we would have to declare a surplus with no value, and then Drex and Jeff are handling the seewishes.
Right, and, and, and just, you know, we can't give it any inherent value, meaning we can't load it, we can't do anything, things don't get it. But, you know, we really need to be careful that we don't give anybody in advance.
I, I can't advertise, I'm, I can't make, I have told the people that contacted me to contact me again today after this, um, decision was made, but I'm, I'm not going to. I, I have no intention to putting an ad out and calling these people back, they're either going to contact me or they're not.
I think it's going to wind up being a headache for Jeff, and he doesn't need another headache.
Not right now.
I think it just needs to go to the chipper, chipper.
Alright, but that's going to take labor. Can you put it out after somewhere out of your way and leave it?
At some point, it's got to go to the chipper. I mean, uh, when we started.
That much of it?
Yes, sir. Uh, when we started, that's what we were doing, the first two loads went up to the chipper. And when I had this little diversion, we have set it in a spot, um, until this decision was made, and it won't be that much of an issue to load it back in the truck and take it.
If we take it to the chipper and they want to go to the chipper pile and get it, I mean, if the chipper doesn't shred it, if we dump it there, they can go up there and get it, that's theirs. I mean, if, if you can let Frontier know we're going to bring them out there and somebody, and you tell them, hey, it's out at the, the transfer station.
Yeah, but it's going to take more labor to do it.
I think you, I don't think you're going to be able to get away from that, you know. Maybe send a dump truck, load them up.
That's what we've been using, is the dump truck.
Send in about eight dump truck loads up there.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a pile.
They'll scat, they'll dig through it and grab what they want, throw the rest to the side.
That's true, you're not going to haul something off anyway.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be a mess.
I say, I say take it transfer station, then just let your people know it's up there if they want it. And that way our hands are clean.
I make the motion, send it to the transfer station.
Declared surplus and refuse, those items.
Declare it surplus and refuse.
That's not on their agenda, though.
Let's discuss take action.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Alright, I've got a motion by Dwayne, I've got a second by Wade. Any further questions or discussion for Andy, Brian, or Jeff?
No, but we're not declaring the, the reusable ones a surplus, those will be retained. He's already got those pulled out, I believe.
Alright, all in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Sonya, do you feel good about, how you have it wrote, written?
Declare refuse and take to chipper.
Sounds good.
Declare surplus and refuse.
Alright, item number eight, discuss take action on future improvements at golf course. I believe Dwayne has brought you that wanted to discuss this, is that correct?
Thanks Frank, I can take it. Yes, go ahead. Well, we, you know, we worked on the, Larry's done a great job working on the bathrooms and all that stuff, and, uh, after talking to Duff and Jeff both, decided to try to come up with a way to get the most use out of the, of the pavilion. You know, there's been, there's been talk before about, uh, creating a grill area for, for, where people be able to get food and get it away from the pro shop where it messes, you know. It, it puts the, when you do the food and stuff inside with the pro shop, it, it creates a smell in the new clothing, so they've always wanted to get that away. So we kind of came up with a, a plan, since we're already working on the bathrooms and pavilion, to, to take that pavilion, basically cut it in half. Make a grill area and serving area on one side, and then have the other half of it for Duff to do his, uh, what is it called, on his golf tournaments, where he, uh, sets up his golf tournaments. Scoring on his golf tournaments. Kind of drew up a, a rough look of how it would look. You'd have a kitchen area over here, you'd have a serving area here with your tables, split wall in the middle. And then you would extend this slab out here to match the bathrooms, and that would be a scoring area and meeting area underneath the pavilion. You know, we've got most of the structure there, we've got, you know, we've got the power there, there's two 200 amp panels. I'm not going to say minimum work, but it's, the structure's there, we're closing in two walls, we wind up closing in the, the front wall with the doors, windows, and stuff like that. And make it a usable area. I think it would help their return out there. Another way to get the golf course where it can stand alone without help of the general fund. That's my biggest, that's my biggest goal that I work at, is to get, try to run that golf course like a business where it stands on its own, where we're not supplying it with money any longer. I think that's the one area we're missing out, we got a super great course, but that's one of the gems we're missing, is a place for people to go, to go out there and golf. After they finish playing golf, with the, the hang around, the talk, the weather's bad, a place to get in and out of, we do not have that out there for them. And, uh, I, I think that's, uh, it ties into everything else, we got the bathrooms, we got a grill area, you got a place where people can get a sandwich or whatever they want to fix for them. Basically like the success stand at the Expo Center. You know, it, you, we get the bell, bell tower tore down, all that cleaned up. It gives them twice as much room in the old pro shop for merchandise, where they're not so cramped in there. I think it's a good fit all the way around. I know there's other areas, we talked about doing improvements on the golf course. You know, we've got the, the bridge is taken care of, uh, the new fence is taken care of. I know there's bathrooms out on the course they, they, they've worked on, but I think this part here is the center of everything, i- i- if that golf course. We get this in place, it just, it, it takes us to another place.
My only concern is so far, is seeing where we're at, once we get down to the pump station, what do we got going on at the pump station, the restrooms, and we really hadn't committed to the demo.
When we really hadn't discussed, we got two more restrooms.
Right, what takes probably 40, and where the money lies, and what we put in text pool, and what we didn't spend the last few years, see where the money's at.
And, uh, we haven't added to the text pool in a year or more. He makes, Dwayne makes a good presentation, I'm not saying he's not right on this, but I, I had other thoughts about when we tear the, bell tower down. We take the rest, uh, take the kitchen out of the clubhouse, and come this way towards the bell tower with the kitchen and the dining. Is what my thoughts were.
So were, were y'all wanting, when we discussed this, were y'all wanting like to go out and start getting prices, maybe, seeing what, seeing what projects would cost, and then come back to the court? Or, I mean, what do y'all think of?
Okay, at this point, I think we need to go ahead and finish what we got started.
See where the money's at?
Uh, there's two, there's a couple of things we need to hold off on closing it in, if we go the route that Dwayne wants to go. Uh, we're not really, I guess postponing, seeing what our options are at this point. Like you said, we may run out of money, and I don't see us adding to it very quick, if we, if we ever do. We've, the last six years, we've worked hard to get this text pool.
Cause I know the pump station is going to run us about 250, somewhere in that ballpark?
And that, this new fence we're putting up, we may, it may look so good, we may have to put some more fence up.
I just, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, you're fine.
And I understand about everything that needs to be done out there. I just, I feel that while we're working on those bathrooms that are part of the pavilion, it's easier to keep it under construction than continue on. Because once we tear down that bell tower and get rid of those bathrooms, then these bathrooms at the pavilion become a necessity. And if you go back under construction again, they're not accessible.
Good point. Got to go back.
Again, these restrooms were going to be for mortal use, if you close this in, are you going to build some more restrooms?
No, I, they can, they will still use those, they'll have the pro shop restrooms and these restrooms.
But it's more closed in.
I mean, if I was out there playing golf, it wouldn't matter where I had to go to, I don't have to use the bathroom out there open, I can go into.
I hope not.
I've been known to do that, but, uh, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem going through the, through a grill area.
Through the back doors.
I'd like to see this move forward with, with this type of situation, but I'd like, you know, I'd like to check them and see what it's going to cost.
Get some pricing.
While we're doing all this, this may not be feasible for us to do, but, you know, I would like to find out.
Right, maybe some would be, some wouldn't be.
Some wouldn't, exactly.
Yeah, because.
What we've got started, we're not talking about a whole lot, we might, uh, we've already decided we may not want roll-up doors in there, you know. And there's, there'd be one wall we might want to hold off on, closing in, but that's it. If, if you go the route Dwayne wants to go.
Current construction we've got going on.
Well, then you might have also some windows that need to be framed in, like on the ends.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be right now.
Well, I'm hearing some want to go out and just talk about the pricing.
I just want to get bids and see what it would cost.
Right, without spending any money, just talking.
You know, I'm talking about.
And I guess we'd get done, yeah, we get done, and then we've got to see where the value's at to bring back.
Oh, also, also, the, the situation on getting the kitchen out of the merchandise. Oh, also, also, the, the situation on getting the kitchen out of the merchandise. And, and I agree with that, but not across the parking lot. I can't, you know, to me, if you're gonna eat, you'd wanna eat where you can see the merchandise through, through glass doors or something.
And I talked to Duff and I've, Duff signed off on this, he agreed with everything, and I talked to Jeff, he agreed with it. They don't think it will hurt splitting that off. Or I'd say Duff doesn't think. I didn't ac, actually ask you that.
So you'd have this, then you'd have the old house where the pro shop stands still with the merchandise and where they go in and book their...
They go in and pay their green fees. And Duff said that once we get the bell tower tore down and all that, he would probably move the cart straight up there to, to be...
Or, or we'll put a, put a kitchen and dining area on top of the concrete that's sort of there. That you can see out.
Right, move it further from where it's at right now.
No, no blast in, a blast in dining area where you can see the golf course. There's, there's a lot of options, I guess. We still keep it going.
And I guess the next step would be is to get rid of the bell tower and...
Soon as we get these restrooms finished, we tear, we tear, we start on the restrooms out on the course and tear the bell tower down. Soon as we, soon as we complete these restrooms.
And then we decide if we close in this, move forward that, or we close how you want to do it.
Okay, if, if we go this route right now, which he makes sense on construction, but we'd have to wait on tearing anything else down or starting anything else.
Right.
And we've already had complaints about the restroom down on the course.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you feel, Jeff?
I, I don't know, I...
Court may be, court may be split, Jeff, you need to watch where you're answering.
All I know is that things are looking good, that everything that we're doing is an improvement, people are positive, I mean, giving us positive comments. This is the court's property and whatever, whatever y'all decide is what y'all decide with our input. And I, I think both y'all are making good points to be, to be honest with you. I don't know.
He's a politician.
Well, no. I, I knew, I knew that once that we started doing this, that this, this was gonna snowball. Because it's, it's a positive thing that we've needed to improve things out there. Now we're, the, the, just like Mr. Holsey said, there are several different things we can do. That's my personal opinion. I know it's not an answer, but I, I, I think having either way, taking the kitchen out to where the carport is. Or taking the kitchen into, into the pavilion, either way is a good thing. I, I think our customers will adapt either way, whether it's across the parking lot or not. What I think is gonna be a huge improvement is to walk into a pro shop that has merchandise and it's gonna be organized as a, as, we'll have more. It'll be, it'll look better, it'll be more inviting as, instead of the, the situation that it is in now. And I think by moving the kitchen over to the pavilion, if, if we find that our customers are not seeing the merchandise, we can put some over there somehow. I believe, and this is just my opinion, I believe that people are gonna come out if we have a grill, a kitchen, whatever you wanna call it. But a place that they can go get a sandwich for lunch or whatever, they're gonna go straight there, they don't care what's in the pro shop, they're not there to go. It's another avenue to raise funds, is how I see it.
And, right, but if the merchandise is, so you, you can look through the window or, or doors or something other where they're eating, they may buy something.
Absolutely, absolutely, especially at the holiday time or, you know, having that birthday present available. That's my opinion.
Here again, we're all saying this personal opinion, this personal opinion.
He's running for office.
Yeah, he is, yeah. And my, and my biggest holdup is always, you know, the money. I don't think it's a problem, personal opinion, that we actually see what both would cost. You know, whether we do it over by the pro shop or we do it, close in the pavilion. I'm good at moving forward with getting the pricing on that. And then wait and see where we're at once we extend the funds that we've already obligated, what we've got left to move forward. And I'd, I'd really like to get the demo done of the old bell tower and that walkway. And get that done before we decide how we're gonna build. You're being off point.
I, I agree with that, but that's the biggest comment besides the bond groups that I get out there from just our general public is the condition of the park. I'm not sure why that was never re-roofed, why that was never taken care of.
Cause we didn't know which route to go on that, that's...
Right. But that's the biggest comment I get is the condition of the park.
Let's get these restrooms finished and tear that down and then make them see. Or I may, I may change my mind, too.
Right.
But we need to get that tore down.
But the pricing wouldn't affect what's way, going with it.
Right, getting pricing and on both sides, it doesn't, getting pricing will be fine.
The county's already engaged a construction manager, so...
He can go get the pricing for us, he can, and then if it's a certain amount, come back and say, alright, we gotta go out for a piece, things like that. But, yeah. What did we wind up spending on the creek, do you know?
Just that 30, uh, on the, the machine rentals, like $3,600, or $36, $3,700. It was a couple of bill payments ago.
For a week.
It's good.
Yeah, it was just a one week's rental.
Yeah, that worked out really well.
I don't see why we can't move forward with the ideas we got and see which ones, the pricing, after we get through with all the demolition. And then we can see where we're at, which way we're gonna go. I think it's very important that the guys that run the place for us tell us which way they would like.
You talked to Don about what your idea is on the kitchen part, and then I'll talk to Don about this, if that's alright to you.
Well, do we have a motion just to move forward to getting pricing on future improvements? Move forward to that?
I make the motion.
Have a motion by Dwayne, just get pricing on the pavilion and the kitchen area that Larry discussed. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion?
Yes. It's gonna be hard for me and him to work together, but we need to with Don, cause he can't, Don won't know what he's doing.
Right.
Right now, if Dwayne comes and approaches him, saying, we're gonna do all this.
Right.
And Don won't know what's gonna be changed.
You'd like to be involved in all the discussions, yeah.
We're gonna have to.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna meet them at any time. I've got a different vision of this.
I understand that.
And you've got a vision, I don't really understand that, but I understand what I see here, is when I say that. He understands his and you understand yours.
But, we don't wanna confuse what he's doing right now.
Right. Oh, no, I, I've been around destruction and that, I understand.
We don't wanna slow him down on what we've got going.
But I don't want you out there doing something without even knowing it.
Right.
That's the bottom line, right? Okay, that's on record.
He said that on recording, didn't he? Alright, so I do have a motion. I have a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's by far, zero against. Alright, item number nine, approved budget transfers. Who's Ken doing?
There are none.
Item number 10, K County Bill.
Uh, yes, sir, I put these on your desk this morning. The, with the, with an addition on the bottom, because this is one that we pay out of that expo center deposit account for the January shaving sales tax. So the grand total is $5,206.50 for these, for these requested payments.
I make motion, pair of bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth, pair of bills.
Second.
I have a second by Wade. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion. That's by far, zero against. Pass it down to Simon, we'll put it in Son's pile. Alright, at this time, we will retire into executive session. Andy, I think you need to stick around for the post portion of it.
Do you need to go to court?
Yes, I gotta go do a probate right quick and I'll be back. Yeah, if you don't mind, wait, it won't take me 10, 15 minutes. Alright, Central County District Court reconvening in regular session at 11:47. There's no action being taken at this time on executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second? Have a second by Larry. All in favor said motion. That is by far, zero against at about 11:48. Thank you, Kenneth. And we'll do this again on the 27th, which is I guess the next Wednesday.